Good evening, everybody. It's now 7:00 PM. And we'll start the city council meeting for October 27th, 2025. And I'll look to the clerk to do a call order, or a call, a roll call. Oh, wait, we're gonna salute the flag first. Ask Councilor Cheney to lead us in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, councillor. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Now, we'll go to the clerk and ask for, actually, I should say who was here tonight. We have.
Katie.
No, I didn't want to mess up her last name. Help me, Katie.
Madam Clerk.
Yeah, Madam Clerk, that works too. Yeah, we have our city manager here. And we have Glenn Smith here as the finance director. And Madam Clerk, I'll ask you to do the roll call.
Councillor Cheney.
Here.
Councillor Susie.
President.
Councillor Hoffman.
President.
Councillor Haynes.
Here.
Councillor Bogart.
Here.
Councillor Felch.
Here.
Mayor St. Clair.
Here, thank you. I jumped right ahead on that staff there. So, do we have a proclamation tonight? We don't?
No.
Okay. So, I'll look for a motion to accept the meeting, the minutes from the previous meeting?
So moved.
Okay, no objections?
No.
Okay, all in favor, raise your hands. Six, seven, thank you very much. I do not believe we have any consent in action items for tonight.
No.
Well, this is moving right along then. So, is there, for item nine, any citizens here for comments on matters? Not on the agenda? Excellent, we have somebody coming up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councillor Patrick Wood, Chairman of the Human Relations Committee. After our last meeting of the Human Relations Committee, we established a subcommittee to plan a community event to talk about the issue of homelessness. And we have this event scheduled for Wednesday evening, November 12th, at 7:00 to 9:30. Basically, the question is, what do we know about homelessness in Laconia? It'll be at the high school in the auditorium. It will be videotaped. Lakes Region Public Access will be doing that. We'll have a panel consisting of representatives from the police department, the fire department, the city council. Councillor Cheney is on this planning committee. Perhaps the mayor or the city manager are also there. We'll also have Kathy Bowler from the Housing Authority. We'll have somebody either from mental health center or navigating recovery. We're gonna have Peter Spanos, the county commissioner. So, we're gonna ask this event to be publicized on a countywide basis because the issue of homelessness, as you know, is not limited to the city of Laconia, nor is the solution supposed to be limited to the city of Laconia. So, they're going to be involved. We also have members of the business community, Kara Chase from Legacy New Hampshire, the real estate company. Peter, sorry, Paul Lang from Belmont, who grew up here in Laconia, is going to be part of the panel as well. And we're working to try to get somebody from the courts also to be at the panel. The proposal is we'll have a short presentation from each of the panel members talking about some of the things that they do, what they're aware of, what their concerns are. And then, open it up to the public for questions and answer. So, it should be a very interesting evening. And the goal is to listen and learn. And hopefully, we'll ask people when they get up to speak, not only to rest, or exist, or state their state, their concerns and their fears, but also try to think about a solution or something that might help alleviate their fears and concerns. So, we want this to be an opportunity for people to express their concerns, but also to think about ways to deal with some of the problems. As we know, homelessness is a multifaceted issue. People are homeless for many different reasons. By the same token, there's no one single solution either. There are many, many different solutions to different parts of it. And that's what we need to hear from people about and try to think of ways to find those solutions. So, November 12th, 7 o'clock, Laconia High School. If you have any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Pat. There is somebody else up. If I could get you to remove that, please.
Yeah, probably not, but thanks for asking.
Well, I-
There's no rule that says I have to-
You're absolutely, it's just courtesy.
I understand that, I'm not removing my hat, sir.
You're not a very courtesy person.
Sir, I'm not removing my hat, but thank you very much for asking. I appreciate you asking nicely.
I love the transparency, thank you.
Hey, not a problem, brother. So anyways, um-
No, you can give us your name.
Oh, sorry, my name's Doug Robinson. I was actually gonna do that when I presented this. How you doing?
It's nice to see who you are.
Yeah. So anyways, how many of you guys know what kratom is? Or H, or 7OH? This is something that's being sold at every convenience store, Walmart, Kmart. It's your fifth level of opium. What it is, is they're taking a plant-based material and they're changing it into a synthetic drug. They're marketed as mood-altering, pain-relieving, sexual enhancement. You name it, they market it. There's no reason they can't because there's no rules against it. 14 states throughout the country have now banned this, Florida being the last. Franklin was the first town in our state that also banned this drug. I'm here tonight to kinda just do a little proposed ordinance. It's not official, there's nothing to it, other than some stuff that I wrote up. Got some information about that. Sir, if you could just hand those down. I guess I'll have to let you look at it, weigh it, and if it's something that we wanna tackle, I would love to have it tackled. I think that we have a smoker's haven down the road here. They sell that to people that are 18 years old. Everything else in that store, you need to be 21 to buy. It's a problem. So, I guess ask that, that's what I'm here to do tonight, just kinda present this and hope that, you know, we can look at it seriously and maybe make some headway on something like this. That's it. Okay? Well, I don't know what that means, sir.
It means, thank you.
Ah, see, words matter, thank you.
Same as a symbol. Is there anybody else who would like to address the council? At this time? All right, thank you. Any presentations tonight? Public hearings, anything along that agenda?
Nope.
Nope.
Okay, we'll go down to our-
Okay. Mr. Mayor, we were just notified that we are having some YouTube issues. Glenn's working with IT, trying to figure out what the problem is, just so you know.
Is this something that has been, are we waiting for a new system?
No, I don't know why this, the new system's been installed, this has nothing, those, the new system that we did and this, they're not connected to each other.
And will this be, will people be able to watch the meeting after, like in-
We don't know if it's recorded, we're not, we're not sure.
Okay.
I will say, over the weekend, they started the process of switching us to a fiber network. And I suspect that, just because of the timing, this is related to that, but we'll find out.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, that's a bummer. All right, I guess we'll go to 15. And first of all, I'd like to say that obviously, this pumpkin fest was done very well. I'm sure that Councillor Susie and the rest of the councillors and the city manager will have some comments on that, but everything went really well. And pretty much all I'll say on that, was very happy about it, though. The, we have the election this coming week from tomorrow. And so, I would encourage everybody to do their due diligence in paying attention to who's running and all the different facets that go along with that. If you have any questions about the stuff here at the, at the city level, make sure you come in and see the clerk and you can ask for minutes from previous meetings and you can certainly reach out to any of the councillors. And I also wanna just do a little shout-out for signs. I hope everybody's able to get their, their election signs, their political signs down within a couple days after the election. So, we're not seeing them out there for several weeks. I don't know if there's a, if there's a city ordinance about that.
We use the state. We follow the state.
We follow the state, and that, I think is two weeks or 30 days or something like that?
Friday, the week after election.
Friday, the week after the election.
Okay. So, hopefully, there's a lot of signs out there, a lot of signs out there. So, that'd be great. And that's pretty much all I have to say. Any council comments tonight? Councillor Cheney?
I would like to echo your comments about Pumpkin Fest. I think Councillor Susie and the city staff did a tremendous job. I've been, years ago, to Keen's Pumpkin Fest and this competed nicely. What a great crowd, what a great bunch of vendors. I mean, just everything about it was, one possible exception, that would be the apple pie eating contest. Everything else went very smooth. In any case, I seriously, I wanna-
You finished top six.
I finished number six out of six. That's his fault. The other thing I wanna bring up tonight, Mr. Mayor, is I, as a result of conversations with friends and in fact, a family member, over several months, I've noticed there's discussions about staffing levels at the hospital. And I would like to ask that the mayor and the city manager have a meeting with the hospital to discuss the possibility. There's a large group of migrant nurses and practitioners and whatever, who come in for six months or a year, whatever, at a time. And it occurred to me that maybe we could enhance the project by giving them space in the hospital because there are significant portions of the hospital that are no longer used. And we could give rooms to those nurses or others, which would increase their wages because they wouldn't have to pay for a room somewhere else in town. So, in any case, there may well be reasons why it can't be done. There may be even better things to think about. But as this council knows, I'm very concerned about Laconia Hospital and where it's going and where we're gonna be in May of next year. So, if we can get together with, or if we can get the mayor and the city manager to get together, I spoke to the manager earlier today about this. I think he does have some comments. But I really hope we can do something to try and encourage more staff to come to Laconia and work on a part or full-time basis.
That's, that would be a good logical question, for sure.
Yeah, I was just, when we talked about it, you know, we have been discussing with an attorney our concerns over the hospital contract, which expires. And we know that it's been publicly discussed. So, my first thought is I'll reach out to him and at least have broached that conversation about how he feels we should best have that discussion, but it's certainly something we can do.
Councillor Susie?
I just wanna expand upon what Councillor Cheney and yourself had to say when it comes to Pumpkin Fest. I wanna really say thank you to the city manager for putting together the team that he did. That was led by Amy F. Paxenbruck. And in a short period of time, they had to work this on. I think this was originally started in April, okay? And think about it, put together what you saw over this, over that day and doing it all in five or six months, putting it all together. And it was awesome. It was meant to be for families and was really targeted to be for families. Sure, the weather helped us, it really did. You always pray for halfway decent weather and it was great. But not just that, there was no, no incidences of any kind, a minor medical here and there, but nothing that, and it was great. I mean, everybody had a good time. All the vendors that I spoke to were great. I mean, we got there at 5:00 AM and we didn't leave till after 8:00. It was a long day, but it was well worthwhile. And when you go down Pleasant Street, you see all the food trucks, they get five or six people deep, almost all day long. And then, again, on Main Street and along with our stores. You know, I mean, I think what it did, and hopefully, we get some, I know the sun, I saw Gabe there, the sun does a fantastic job in exposing it. But over time, next year, and we're gonna have a meeting tomorrow, and I think it's already been said, next year will be two days. It's right on the, you've seen it published here and there. And we'll bring it up a week earlier, maybe a little bit warmer. But it's awesome, okay? And it really shows Laconia for what Laconia really is. The city of the lakes, a great place to live, a great community, fantastic people. And nothing that should be, as you keep hearing here and there and everything else, stepped on. We're a great community and I love being here. Thank you.
Can I just add, Mr. Mayor? I meant to mention a fact. When I came downtown about 10:30 Sunday morning, you would have no idea that Pumpkin Fest had occurred the night before.
Well, I wonder who was responsible for that?
West.
We thank them. Okay, go ahead, Eric.
Yeah, just to continue talking about Pumpkin Fest, I also think it was really successful. Everyone I talked to had really positive things to say about it. And I think especially in the current configuration where it really feels like you are in downtown during Pumpkin Fest and it's not off to the side, or in the city hall parking lot was fantastic. All the business owners I talked to, you know, I think it's, did a really good job of driving business and people downtown to frequent our stores. And I think, you know, at the end of the day, that's really what this, this event is about. You know, not just doing something for the community, but doing something for the, for the local businesses and the downtown area. I think it was, it was fantastic and successful. So, thank you to everyone who was involved.
Thank you. Councillor Haines?
Just quickly, I just wanna thank the city manager for his leadership. I mean, it was above and beyond to pull this all together, especially with all the departments. And my only other comment was, my wife was involved, being a vendor, and she couldn't say enough about how helpful the fire department was when they were taking down their tent and everything, that they assisted them. So, thank you for your leadership. That's what leadership is about.
Councillor Bogart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Start with, I echo everybody else's compliments on Pumpkin Fest. But my real comments are, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add a comment to item 21B, which is the mayor's appointment of the Laconia Human Relations Committee. I request that it be removed from the agenda based on the following reasons. One, the actual item does not reflect anything within the council's rules on how the mayor can reappoint anybody to any special committee. The only, if I may finish, the, under the rules, I could not find any rule in the document that reflects the reappointment of anybody to any special committee. The only rules I've found pertaining to mayor's committees is they all end at the end of the year, period.
But you don't know how to get there?
No, you can appoint.
Oh, okay.
You can appoint. But what this is, is reappointment. And in this case, we do not have a rule that allows for the reappointment. Now-
Well, Steve, before you get down the road too far, I'm just trying to be clear about this. So, the mayor can appoint, but can't reappoint?
That's correct, to a special committee.
A special committee?
A special committee.
With, 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 my only thing I have experience with is the Motorcycle Week Association, the mayor-
That's not a city committee, is it?
It's not, okay. That's what you're saying, the difference is a city committee?
The difference is that, now, I'm gonna give you an example of a special committee. The mayor, the previous mayor, made a special committee to discuss North Main Street, the 10 acres and the possible development of North Main Street. They had their meetings, they had their conclusion, and they came to it and the committee ended. The mayor made all the selections for everybody on there. And the way it is stated in the council rules is a committee should, a committee should only run for one year. And it's based on that there is a purpose, a being singular purpose, that this committee is supposed to be working on. And once that purpose has been achieved, then the committee is dissolved. In this instance, the committee in question will somehow end at the end of the year. And then, a mayor then can reappoint a committee and then appoint members to the committee. The committee has to have a purpose that the council itself does not fulfill or is too complicated and too time-consuming for the council to fulfill.
So, that would be the council's decision?
No, in this instance, the council, let me finish.
I know.
The council does not have any word or say-so. And the reason why I bring it up now is, the way this is written is we don't get a comment on this. The mayor just says, I appoint, reappoint all these people and it's done. Well, by this, this does not provide authority to reappoint anybody to any special committee. You can appoint someone.
Let me, just one thing, okay?
I yield, just for a second-
To do with this, yeah. It's to do with this. We're out of procedure, this should have been done when that came up. And the proper procedure-
Only if you get able to discuss. This does not allow council to discuss because this is not a council committee.
Right.
This is a mayor-only committee.
I get that, but we're out of order. It should have been done at the beginning of that item. And then, what I would like to see be done is to have it tabled and how, and wait a minute, and have the city manager and find out the information that needs to be found out. If we're out of procedure, come up with the procedures that we should be following.
I would agree with that. And I was, what I was gonna say, Councillor Bogart, was that I would refer to the city manager, I agree with Councillor Felch about tabling it, and I would refer to the city manager to dig in to make sure that everything is being done properly. I guess through legal or whoever, unless you have a comment on it now.
Nope, that's fine, if you table it, we'll take care of it.
I would like to, if we table it and when we take care of this, I would like to know which rules that are gonna apply and not just-
Yeah. And that's what we're gonna have the city manager do?
I would like to know that.
So noted.
Okay, so then, at this point, then I will make a motion, if that's appropriate to you, to do it now or this late?
No, let's wait till we get to it, okay?
Okay.
We're jumping to the panelists.
Because also, in closing, committees are supposed to have a purpose. And in this instance, there is no purpose.
Well, that's always a matter of opinion, of course. And that's why I would rely on the six members of the council-
It's not an opinion, it is a procedure.
Then I will wait to, again, to, we'll table it and we can discuss. Then we'll get to that and then, then you guys can figure it out.
Yeah, this was one of those committees that was formed. We went back to try to find exact, we're a little over 20 years that this committee has been formed.
20 years?
Yeah, it goes back a very long time. Wasn't always, so if you don't reappoint anybody, they don't just go away. So, they stay within, this is from legal. So, they stay within their, within their rights to do anything. Just like as Mayor Hosmer appointed this group here, by you coming in, it doesn't go away. The seat actually fills, the position's not a person. So, we have done some years, over the, over the course of the 20-plus years, it's been reappointed, generally on the beginning of the January meetings. Other times, it hasn't been. So, certainly, if we, if you table it, we'll spell out the entire process for you. It's relatively simple, but we'll spell it all out and then you can go from there at your next meeting.
Okay, and if I, well, let's wait till we get to there and then- Okay, and if I, well, let's wait till we get to there, and then we can ask some more questions. Is that all, Council Bogart?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Also, Mr. Mayor, if I can just jump in, also, we are streaming now.
Okay, thank you. And, and they'll be able to watch this, delay the rest of it, that happened before?
Yes, it was recording, it just wasn't streaming to the public, and now it is. And the entire meeting will be available tomorrow.
Transparency with a capital T, I like that, thank you. Council Felch.
So, back to the positive with the Pumpkin Festival. I definitely want to shout out to the city manager, Amy Levesque, Nancy Joya, Councilor Susie. Also shout out to Bank in New Hampshire for letting us use their parking lot, the radio and TV and paper for all the advertising they did for this thing. And also a note to the public that it is going to be two days, October 16th and 17th. Yep, those are the days. No, it's Friday and Saturday after Columbus Day. Huh? Okay, I was told Friday and Saturday, but okay, that's beside the point. And just a great job by everybody, the city employees, everybody that was involved, and the laser light show at night was awesome. Great job.
We can start planning again.
Okay, all right, I guess that's it on Council comments. So, any committee reports tonight? Okay, seeing none, any liaison reports? Okay, well now we'll go to item 19, citizens' request to comment on current agenda items. Counselor, excuse me, I'm sorry, Pat, come on up, Pat.
Patrick Wood, Ward 1. I've read what I could about this, Resolution 2025-33, and I, I'm hopeful that you're gonna have this public hearing on this matter, but I just-
We will.
I am really puzzled as to how this could happen, and all of a sudden, there's this demand for 800 and some thousand dollars on the school district.
Yeah, we'll talk about it when we get done, I have-
All right, thank you.
I don't know if it's a good answer, but it's the answer.
But it's an answer, anyway, yeah. I mean, it just boggles my mind how something like that could happen. Somebody must have missed a switch, it feels like, here. Anyway, that's my question, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we'll go to 20, city managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, I will certainly say thank you for your comments about me with Pumpkin Fest, but it wasn't me. It was the department heads, it was Nancy, it was the employees that kept the place clean, it was fire and police and DBW and parks and planning and licensing and everybody else that did the work. You know, I certainly, as, as, you know, as manager and those departments couldn't be any more proud, but I, I appreciate your comments to me, and certainly, your comments to, to the employees will be heard. Including your packet tonight is the projects update, I'm just gonna hit a few of them, but they're all in there. Morningside Drive, Lockwood, Windmill, all those areas up there off the old North Main Street, they're gonna have a first coat, or a binder coat in the next couple of weeks, and will be talked next year. No real changes on most of the other stuff. Hilliard Road, the preliminary design for that culvert is in January, so that will be moving along very well, and we'll finally get that, the plan done and the, and the construction. That's the culvert towards the end of Hilliard Road, that if that little area washes out, we lose access to both the old section of Hilliard Road that goes out to Parade Road, as well as the houses that are down in there. So, this is a, this is a project with DOT, with FEMA, with, there's some grant money involved in that, so that, that's what we're doing with all that. The OPG loop continues to be worked on, should be done by mid-November. Winnebago River Basin Project, we've talked a few times about an LSR that's gonna go out to try to rewrite how we pay into, or how much that we have to pay into by percentage of the Winnebago River Basin Program, as well one of the 10 communities. To add on to that, and to support the LSR, we've, we're going to be, and it's in your packet tonight for one of our discussion points, but I'll just mention it real quick now, we have a letter of concern from all the communities that we want to send out, just to lay out, so we're, continue to build those building blocks of our concerns as to why, why we're moving along with an LSR, why we're moving along with some of these changes. So, that, you'll, you'll see that in your packet tonight. We got a question about some blasting up on White Oaks Road. I did talk to Fire Department today, they do expect that to go on for a couple more weeks, and it is part of the sewer extension project that's going on up there. It is all permitted, and when I talked to the deputy chief today who handles all that, he said, "Should be a couple more weeks worth of blasting." Whiz Beach Restoration, we have an RFP out, I know this is one that's dragged on for way too long, but we do have an RFP out to try to work on. We'd like, we talked about in the past, we did work on a, we did work with a, a shoreland scientist out of UNH, came up with a few ideas, but now to really try to figure out what that would cost and what that would entail, we do have an RFP out, so we should be hearing back from that really soon. And again, that wouldn't fix the problem on the beach, what it would do is prevent it from getting any worse, and then we could, the other half of that would be, how do we make any repairs to get some of that sand back onto the beach, and so that, it's really two-part process. The master plan, next, tentatively scheduled, is that the guaranteed schedule yet? Okay, November 13th, 5:00 PM, City Hall, here in the chambers, will be the next master plan steering committee, sir, obviously it's a public meeting. And lastly, the state school update, the one thing I will say, that on the website, under planning, is the traffic study. It was done, the Pillsbury Group contracted a, a traffic study. Please don't try to print it, it's, it's about 1,000 pages long. It's, it's so detailed that, you know, it's hard to wrap your brain around it. So, what we did was, we hired a third-party company that we use quite often in the city for traffic studies, to really go through that and break it down and, and to make, you know, on our end of it, so we, we're seeing what we need to see, a traffic study. That one we've just received, we haven't even had a chance to go through it yet. Once that happens, that'll become public as well. It's just gotta take a little time between the engineers to, to work through the, the talking points on it and to make sure it's, you know, ready to go out. But that's on there, if you want to take a look at it. It's, like I said, very intense, but, but it is on there. The unemployment rate, though, that hasn't changed, we, that just hasn't been updated, that's not us, it's just, we don't have the updated information yet on that. And the last thing I have for you is on the last page of my report, is our CPI number, we're getting, getting towards the end of the year. Three more, three more months to put into it, but as of right now, we're annualizing out at 2.68% of CPI, which, as I say all the time, but if you're new to listening to it, that's one of our factors that go into the tax cap calculation. That is all I have for you.
Thank you, thank you very much. All right, we'll go to new business, and that would be 21A, that's a Resolution 2025-33, authorization of a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $757,000 for the purpose of covering the cost of a special assessment levied against the school department with funding to come from unencumbered fund balance.
So, we had the same conversation when we talked about our health insurance from the city side. The, essentially, there's two ways the municipalities can purchase health insurance, and schools the same way. You can either go out and find a third-party, we could go to a local Bob's Insurance Company and get our insurance in, just like any of us could do, or go into a buying group, for lack of a better term, a buying group where there's a lot of municipalities involved in it, lowers your rate, makes sense. The school, for many, many years, has been with school care. The city side of us, we don't, we're not in the same insurance as them, the city side just switched to school care in the current fiscal year that we're in now. Part of the problem we ran into last year, which was why there were some assessments, was these companies were, have been mandated by the state to keep 12% of their contributions in their bank, that's essentially what they have to keep. The only way for them to do that was to put assessments, which are allowed to do, onto the member communities. Each of the member communities, it, it, based on their, what they currently pay, I saw numbers anywhere from just over a million dollars to 500, 600,000 dollars, depending on who you were. We were just under 900,000 for the city, or for the school department, rather. The city's not affected on the city side because we weren't part of them last year. So, the school department had some leftover insurance money that they're gonna use, and then as part of their fund balance, from the end of FY '25, which came out at 1.157 million, they're gonna use a portion of that towards paying off this assessment, which, you know, we're certainly fortunate that we're in that position and not trying to figure out where to come up with 900,000 dollars. So, that's where this stands, this does need to go to a public hearing and, before you can approve it, but that, that's where we stand, unless Diane has anything to add to it?
Sure, so, insurance pools sometimes work in your favor, if they have excess revenue, you get money back, which we have in the past, over the last 25 years, gotten some of those things back, which we roll back to our employees so that they pay less of a, of a percentage for their insurance. This time last year, school care had a meeting, the question was asked, because of inter-local trust having an issue, "How are you guys doing? How's your reserves?" "Our reserves are great, nothing to worry about, we believe them." Unfortunately, the claims that were during the '24-'25 fiscal year outweighed the revenue, so they had to go into their reserves. So, they used all their reserves plus a negative of 4.5 million dollars. So, they had to make up 30 million dollars for their reserves. Our portion, as the school district, was 2.9% of that. 2.9% of 30 million dollars is 874,000, which was our assessment. Lundery got 2 million, Concord got a million, Hanover got a million, I mean, a lot of, everybody had to pay. The lowest amount was a small town, I can't remember, the Stark or something like that, for a thousand dollars, but everybody in the pool had to pay to make up the amount. I'd love to say that I was clairvoyant in not spending our whole budget and revenues, so we would have this amount of money to put towards that assessment, but I was not. I was watching the news and seeing these school districts that were, you know, short a million, short 4 million, short 5 million, and when I saw that we had excess revenue, I was like, "We gotta hang on to that, just in case a special ed bill comes out of the blue or something like that," never thinking it was gonna be the insurance assessment. Um, yes.
Could I get you just to, in case people don't know who you are, just to say who you are?
Oh, sorry, Diane Clary, Business Administrator and Laconia School District.
Thank you. Go ahead, Council Susie.
Sorry.
This is, this is a one-time situation, correct?
Well, I would love to say that this will never happen again, but now that it has happened, I will, in my budget process, have a contingency in case this does happen again, because there's no guarantees that they're, you know, going to have claims high again, we don't know. So, there is-
Do you plan on staying with the same insurance company?
We do plan to, there's only two pools in New Hampshire right now, Health Trust and School Care. Health Trust has a little bit of a different business model, where they wouldn't assess us per se, but their, their rates are much higher. So, you have to weigh out, do we want to go to Health Trust and never have an assessment or something coming back to us, 'cause that has happened in the past too, 'cause they don't give back or do assessments, but their, their rates are good, 6, 7, 8% more than School Care is, you know, so you have to kind of weigh it out. Yeah.
Thank you, go ahead.
Thank you, any other question? Council Cheney.
Ms. Clary, I, I recall you when I had a conversation, wasn't there another 300 and somewhat thousand dollars we had to also cough up this year?
Well, we don't have to cough it up, but our, the state adequacy number, the final adequacy number for this school year was cut another additional 374,000 dollars. So, we're really in a tight budget for '25-'26, for sure, and I've definitely put the brakes on a lot of things going forward for this year so that we can make up those, those things. But that's just the, the funding in New Hampshire right now is, you know, adequacy is based on, I think I've explained it to you guys before, is based on a couple of different things, but the big factors that go into it is your tax revenue that you get and your free and reduced lunch. Both of those things weigh into what your adequacy number is. And of late, we have a lot of new building in Laconia, so our tax revenue is up, and our free and reduces are down, and they both negatively impact adequacy, so.
Council Susie?
Go back and explain the adequacy. I assume what you're saying, and I shouldn't say the word assume, I expect what you're saying, is that you planned on one number, and then it was changed?
Right, so, they give us an estimate in the fall based on our beginning-of-year school numbers, which is our, you know, enrollment, our free and reduced, our special ed students, et cetera, et cetera. But at the end of the year, we do our final numbers. So, the final numbers are what they end up, you know, giving you. So, the change between our beginning year and end-of-year affected us negatively 374.
So, that was voted on by the legislature?
Yes.
So, that was a surprise to you, and not planned on?
I was not planning on that, I mean, there's always a give and take of, of some monies, but not, not that much.
Not that much. Were we the only, we're not the only district, this is statewide?
Statewide, everybody is, is facing similar things.
So, that was, okay. So, was it a surprise to you that the legislature said, "Pay up"?
Well, it was a surprise to me that our numbers affected it that much. And, you know, as I said, a lot of factors go into it, I mean, the spreadsheet is a mile long on how they determine how much you get, but the two big factors that affect us most is our tax revenue and our free and reduced lunch.
Thank you.
Council Cheney.
I seem to recall now that, or explained this, that there already was a 1. something million dollar-
Yes, I knew that one.
That you had already-
We already adjusted our budget for.
So, the state had set, had said you needed to come up with 1. something, 7, was it?
Yeah, I think, well, 1.5, and, you know, if you remember, last year, we cut positions, and, you know, we cut our budget, we did some moving of funds around to, to make that work.
Yep. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Thank you.
Do we want to stay for the, the other one?
Yeah, they gotta run through these three motions, you might, and then you can stay up there for the next one.
How about if we just skip to her?
Well, just run through these three real quick, and then we'll get to-
All right.
These three motions, and then we'll get to her.
All right.
If that works for you.
Yep. I lost my motions here. Got it right there. Thank you very much.
All three of them, right?
Okay, so we got three proposed motions. The first one is to move the way for reading of Resolution 2025-33 in its entirety and to read by title only.
So moved.
Second, Council Hoffman, second to that, all in favor? That's six in the affirmative, thank you. Next, we're gonna move to conduct the first reading of Resolution 2025-33, authorization of a supplemental appropriation in the amount of 757,000 dollars for the purpose of covering the cost of a special assessment levied against the school department with funding to come from the unencumbered fund balance.
So moved.
Okay, it's moved by Council Felch, seconded by Council, no, Council Bogart, yeah, I can see that. So, by Council Bogart. And all in favor? No discussion? That's six in the affirmative, thank you. And now we'll move to schedule a public hearing on November 10th, 2025, during the regular city council meeting to gather public input prior to adoption.
So moved.
Moved by Council Felch, seconded by Council Susie. All in favor? That's six to nothing, thank you all very much, and thank you, Council Handwell. Stand by.
Stand by, I tell.
Okay, so now, without objection, we'd like to bring up, move 21F to now, to this location. Any objection to that?
Nope, no, I was-
Okay, so, we'll just go ahead and do that then. Come on up. So, that is, this is a Resolution 2025-34, resolution relative to the request of the Laconia School Board- to the request of the Laconia School Board to transfer four hundred thousand of fiscal year twenty-five fund balance to the capital reserve funds. So...
So, uh, that was the additional, I think Kurt said, uh, our fund balance was one-point-one-something. So, this four hundred would, three hundred thousand, we would like to put back in our facility, uh, reserve fund, which, if you remember, we kinda emptied it out to do the high school renovations. So, kinda build that one back up. And we've kinda made a promise to add a hundred thousand dollars, if we have it, each year to the, uh, New Hampshire Stadium Turf Fund, so that when the turf needs to be replaced, we can have that money in reserve.
Okay, uh, questions? Councilor Susie?
How much do you have in that turf fund balance right now?
Right now, there's two hundred thousand. We've been doing it for two years. It, right now, an estimate to replace it is six hundred thousand. So, in another four or five years, we'll have the funds to do it.
Thank you. After the public hearing on this one, next, if you approve to send it to a public hearing and you pass this, uh, it has to go to, uh, the trustees as well before we can actually put it in. But they won't make action, take action on it until they see your, your vote.
One quick question.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Councilor Felch.
How long is supposed to be for that field to last before it has to be replaced?
So, we're at the, uh, border of its life expectancy, but, uh, Coach Cousins does a excellent job of maintaining it, so it's going to last a few more years, so. But by the time we have the funds available, it, it will be, need to be replaced.
Any other questions?
I have a question, but, uh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Just a comment. I think it's an excellent idea and, and, and future-looking to create such a fund as this, and so I just wanted to thank y'all for being forward-thinking.
Happy to.
I'd like to...
Chini?
You only have to watch television for about five minutes to realize you guys are doing an outstanding job compared to some of your other school districts. Yeah. Thank you and thank the superintendent for this.
He's sitting right back there.
Councilor Susie?
Right, that brings up a point. I know that whenever you see the, whether it's Friday Night Football, uh, all of these other different tournaments, it seems like a lot of the schools or districts use Laconia
For their playoffs, yes.
For their playoffs. And does Laconia get any revenue from that?
They do, they do. It goes to the athletics, uh, reserve fund that they have at the, at the school.
Should not go to also some of this?
Yeah, well, we'll ask Craig if he wants to let go of a little bit of that. I mean...
Ask Greg?
No, Craig. He's Coach Cousins. He's kinda, uh, has the controls of that. And the other part of that is when there's playoff games, NHIAA will pay for the staff and for the, the facility when it comes.
I'm just trying to find a way that some of that could be used to help recoup the repair and maintenance of it, that's all. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Oh, do you have another question?
No, I just have one other comment. Now that I know the superintendent's here, I wanna point out she embarrassed me Saturday by doing much better at the pie.
Those are assistant, assistant superintendents.
Oh, as Lisa, yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, uh, Kurt, do you have anything you wanna add to that?
No, I'm good.
Any other comments, anybody? Okay, we're gonna move to waive a re-reading of Resolution twenty-two-five dash thirty-four in its entirety and to read by title only. Council Chini has, uh, made the motion as second. And Council Haynes? Any discussion? No, all in favor? That's six votes in the affirmative, thank you. Okay, now, we'll move to a first reading of Resolution twenty-two-five dash thirty-four relative to the request of Laconia City, excuse me, Laconia School Board to transfer four hundred thousand of fiscal year twenty-five fund balance to capital reserve funds. Look for, uh, motion, uh, moved by Councilor Hoffman and seconded by Councilor Susie. Any discussion? All in favor? That's six in the affirmative, thank you. And now, we'll move to schedule a public hearing on November tenth, uh, twenty-twenty-five, during the regular city council to gather public input prior to any action being taken. Look for a motion for that. Councilor Felch, a second. Councilor Bogart, any, uh, discussion? All in favor, raise your hands. That's six in the affirmative, thank you very much. So, now, we're gonna go to twenty-one B, the mayor's appointment of human, Laconia Human Relations Committee members. So, we've already discussed this a little bit. Do we need to discuss, okay, go ahead, Council, uh, Susie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bogart, so just a couple of quick questions based upon...
Absolutely, thank you.
Is, what is the purpose about pushing it off? Yeah, it sounds to me like if I heard this right, you wanna move this so it becomes at the end of the year. In other words, if the mayor wants to make a committee, he's gotta now wait till the end of the year. Is that right?
It's not what I want, it's what the council rules indicate and state that all special committees, no exception, end at the end of the year. There is no provision within the rules that I can see that indicate that any reappointments can be made to a committee that is gonna end at the end of the year based on the rules.
Might speak for him, please?
Please?
Okay. Could not the council, if they wanted to make a decision to either amend the rules or override the rules and make that a committee appointment now? Could they or could they not?
You would first have to, to set aside the council rules and make a motion to set aside council rules to do that outside of council rules. So, the answer would be, yes, you can once you set aside council rules.
The reason I ask is I think it's a very important committee, okay? We should not take, I don't want, I agree with what you're saying when it comes to the rules. I just don't wanna make, have anybody impression that we take the Human Relations Committee lightly. Okay, I think what Pat Wood and his team has done, uh, pretty darn good, and we gotta keep it in front of us. I was just trying to get a complete explanation from you and for what the city manager will bring later on, on what we could do, that's all.
If I may respond?
Go ahead.
The, all special committees are supposed to have a purpose. There is nothing that I interpret in the rules, no matter how long this committee has been running, that says it could just be a generic committee that does not report to the council. So, all I'm trying to indicate, as was explained earlier, I don't know of anybody who's given this committee directions from the city council. I have asked this question earlier of the city manager, and no one is given this committee oversight from this council. No one's given them the direction that is needed. So, all I'm trying to say is that all special committees should operate under the rules of the council rules, have a purpose, and when that purpose is done, then they should end. And if the mayor so chooses to set up another special committee for another purpose, then that is to his liking. I'm not questioning that fact, cause that is covered here. All I'm saying is, we have a committee that is not operating under the guidelines of the council rules. And based on the council rules, A, there are no reappointments. You can only, once a committee ends, you can only reset up a special committee. There's no rules in here saying that a special committee should have funds and apply for grants and do the things they're doing. They've created subcommittees. They're now doing whatever they wish, not based on any direction that I'm aware of, cause I've not heard the mayor in a public meeting say, "I wish this committee to work on this." So, all that is happening is based on the committee itself becoming self-determined without any council or mayor oversight. That is my conjecture that I am saying, and that we should look at the rules. I can't fix the past, but I can sure address the present and make sure that we, as a council and a mayor, are working within the guidelines that we all adopted. This, matter of fact, it was spring of twenty-twenty-five that this was fully updated to accommodate another special committee. So...
I'm not disagreeing with you, with you saying, what I was saying to start with, I didn't have to, you know, is that the council, though, can turn around and suspend the rules or whatever you wish and make an appointment. That was, that's the end of my, that's, that's, that's why I wanted to jump.
Council Hoffman?
Well, I think, given the history of this committee and the city and, I mean, there's multiple events every year that they organize, um, maybe Council Bogart's right, maybe there should, uh, not be a mayor's committee and it should be a permanent committee under the purview of the city council, and then these appointments can be referred to the, uh, Appointments Committee.
Interesting way to look at it. Council Felch?
So, one quick comment. I think Human Relations is definitely a reason for a committee and a purpose, um, a very important purpose. And as far as what Council Hoffman said, could the council make this a permanent committee like the historic committee?
Yeah, I don't see why not, but I would, I would, uh, I, my recommendation, as after the discussion, would be to table. We can take those couple of different options and, and, and do that up that way. Uh, one, one point, just to, I, I said it earlier, but just to clarify, if this is tabled, it doesn't change their ability to do the work that they're currently doing.
That's correct. So, so, would we, 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 we'd be looking to table this till the next meeting?
It's up to you guys on the plan.
Because that would give you two weeks to, uh...
Yeah, the way I would do it is if for some reason it couldn't be put together in the two weeks, we would just, I would just have to tell you that, you know, it's one more meeting, but I don't see why we couldn't.
And perhaps then the councilors that have, uh, questions or comments about this could reach out to their fellow councilors and, uh, or the city manager and, uh, bring these points up and, uh, discuss it with each other. That would be good. Council Bogart, you had something you wanted to ask or say?
No, it sounded like we covered everything and I was gonna make a motion to table because once the motion's made, we cannot discuss it no more, so I was just waiting till all discussion has been stated.
Okay, so, if you can hold off a second?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Council Susie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Council Bogart, as, I think Council Hoffman has a fantastic observation that as chairman of the Appointments Committee, we would be ready to move as soon as people fill out the, you know, the applications and all. I think it would be great to make it a permanent committee going through that process. Okay, I don't think that would be very difficult to do, but we wanna go through the process. I agree with you, table it, come back for the next meeting.
The question that I would have is, um, if that's what, where the council goes with this, would there be any hang time where the, uh, Human Relations Group would be in limbo?
I think we could make it so it isn't, I mean, again, I have to go back and look at, I, I'll, I'll have to go back and, and look to make sure we're doing the process correctly, but, so, I mean, I can't answer it off the top of my head, but we'd make it so the, we could certainly make it so there's no in-limbo time, um, when it transfers from the current way it's built out to whatever the new po, uh, model looks like.
Okay, and I would hope that, uh, any current members of, of the, uh, committee would, uh, if they have any commentary on this, that they would reach out to councilors, uh, or the city manager, I got you, Steve.
Okay.
Will, um, you know, to reach out and get their comments in. Kind of important, uh, for everybody. Did you have something?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, just thank you. Kurt, I would hope you just check with legal counsel.
Oh, yeah, absolutely would.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, Council Bogart?
I just wanted to say that as, uh, uh, Councilor Hoffman brought up a, a valid option because then it would bring that committee under the direction of the council. And, and that would solve the issue of them just doing whatever they wish. So, that is a, a valid option that is present, uh, based on things, so.
So, your idea, when you say that, you're talking about you would, you would expect a member of the council to attend these meetings, like a liaison-type, liaison-type thing?
I would think so. I think if we're gonna do it, it would be like one of these committees here that are in the rules, which then would be appointed, cause the mayor makes all appointments to all committees, and then it would set the structure of it such that, uh, the committee would work under the function of the council.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, uh, Council Susie.
The mayor doesn't make the appointment of our committees. If the, if the committee is set up as a, like a planning board, things like that, the people who wanna be on the committees come before the Appointments Committee, go through a process, vet the person, then we take the person's application and resume, you might say, bring it to the council, and the full council votes on that person, not the mayor. You've done that, you've participated in that.
That's even better.
Right.
Then that's even better.
Right. That's the process that I'm talking about, that you've participated in before, and I would hope that you'd support that.
Oh, I, as I just said, that's even better.
Right, that's what I think you should do.
You know, because it gives the power of the committee to the whole council
Correct.
to provide the direction.
And what a load off the mayor's back. Council Haynes?
What direction would you expect the council to give the Human Relations Committee?
I, I don't know, I've never been asked.
Okay. I'm all set, Mayor.
All right, thank you. All right, you wanted to make a motion, Council Bogart?
Yes, I make a motion to table this item until such time the mayor, I mean, the city manager, has been able to come up with all options and, and be able to present them, uh, at that time, and if he feels he's ready to do it in two weeks, I'll leave that up to him.
Well, let, why don't we make a motion to table it till the next meeting? And if it's still not ready, then we can make another motion to table it to the meeting after that. At least we'll have an end, an end date.
That's fine.
Yeah, you don't have to take it off the table at any meeting, just keep going.
Right. Okay, so, a second for that motion to table it? This agenda item? Is there a second to table? Okay, seeing nobody's seconded, then that motion fails. So, where do we go from here?
We continue with the item.
If we continue with the item, I must contest that this item does not meet the rules of the council rules, and therefore, you do not have authority to reappoint anybody based on the rules.
Yeah.
So, I will make that legal challenge to this.
I would make, I would make a motion, you either vote to table it or we just don't do anything and move on, which is essentially tabling it. But, I, I, just after all your discussion, I think it's clean if we table and move on.
So, with that said, I'll, I'll second that motion.
No, let's have, let's hear it again. We gotta have the motion again, cause it's already died. So, go ahead.
I make a motion that we table this item until the next meeting.
Then I'll second.
Seconded by Council Felch. Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor, raise your hands. That's six in the affirmative, that passes. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on now to twenty-one C, this is a request to investigate methods to improve the ability of the Taylor Home residents to enter and leave their private development. Okay? Go ahead.
Yeah, Council Susie was asked for us to look into, um, the exit at Union Ave from Taylor Home Drive, which, uh, empties out, well, pretty much the entire Taylor Home complex, on, onto Union Ave to see if there's something we should be doing, um, with either signaling or some type of traffic control setup. I have talked to, uh, to Director Anderson about it. We've had a very limited conversation, but we both agree that if we're gonna have this conversation... limited conversation, but we both agree that if we're gonna have this conversation, it just needs to go to Public Works Committee so we can break down all of the specifics so we can know if it's something we want to bring back to the full committee, or full council, rather.
Counselor Susie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, what I'd like to do is request that we pass this along to the Public Works Committee, and I'm gonna request that the Public Works Committee have the meeting on this at the Taylor Home.
Okay, and what, do you have a date in mind?
No, that would work that out with the chairman of the Public Works Committee and the city, city manager and the Public Works.
Yeah, my office takes care of the setting the dates for all those.
Right.
Hey, I would ask that they made, that date goes way overboard making that public, because that will affect everybody in the city, not just the Taylor Home people, but everybody uses Union Ave.
That's correct.
Yeah, they have a conference room.
We have, we have.
But I, I'm not talking about the conference room. I want that date to make sure that date's well-publicized.
We have.
Transparency. Thank you very much, Counselor Hayes. We want a real transparent date.
I know it's a very significant problem for their situation. There's 485 residents there, and using that one exit and entrance does create a situation on both sides. I mean, for traffic on Union Avenue and the traffic people coming in and out.
Everybody has a problem on Union Ave. It's a busy street. Okay, so that, we don't need a motion on that. We just, we do need a motion.
Paul made the motion. I'll second it.
Who made the motion?
I made the motion that.
Counselor Susie.
He's gonna do it. So you've made that motion. Okay, you second it. All right, no discussion. All in favor, raise your hands. Six in the affirmative. Thank you very much. Thank you, Counselor Susie. Okay, so now we're on 21D. This is a request approval to send a letter of concern to the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services on the management of the Wynn Bisaki River Basin Program.
Yeah, it pretty much says it right there. We, we've got concerns. We know that we've been talking about the financial concerns of this, which is really the crux of it. All 10 communities are bringing this back to their legislative bodies to sign off on this letter. It supports the, the way that the LSR is written. It, it just, it, it shows our concern. You know, we have, our advisory board is very active. The Wynn Bisaki River Basin Advisory Board is very active. They do a great job. We need to push along our concerns a little bit harder. This letter, it's attached, and if you approve us sending these letters of concern, I will sign on behalf of the city. That's what the motion is.
Okay, thank you. Do we need a motion on that?
Yep, that's right there.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that the city council approve the draft letter of concern and authorize the city manager to sign the letter.
Second.
Okay, that's been moved by Counselor Cheney and seconded by Counselor Susie. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hands, please. That's six in the affirmative. Thank you very much. Okay, so we're on, thank you. We're on at 21E. This is a proposed amendment to the wage and compensation plan.
In last year's, or the current fiscal year budget, you approved a project manager position within the Planning Department. This, prior to us, even though it's been approved, prior to us setting any wage compensation plan, anything like that, we have to bring it back to the council, same way we do raises and all that. That's what this is here. So it had to be posted for 10 days for the employees to see. We had no negative comment about it, and now it goes to, to the council for you guys to see. The number you see there is both salary and anticipated benefits package, and that's for a full year. Even though we're only paying out six months of this fiscal year, that's for a full year. And that's what you have on there.
Counselor Susie?
Has this been posted publicly yet?
As soon as you approve this, it'll be advertised. We had to wait.
Thank you. Any other questions or on this or comments?
No.
Okay, we'll move to approve the proposed amendment to the wage and compensation plan as presented, which will take effect January 1st, 2026.
So moved.
It's been moved by Counselor Felch, seconded by Counselor Bogart. All in favor? That's six in the affirmative. Thank you very much. Okay, so that brings us to unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business? The clerk looks like she has some unfinished business. Do you have any unfinished business? No? Well, before we get there, I just, again, want to remind everybody that the election is next, a week from tomorrow night, and if you're going to vote, bring somebody else with you. And I'm hoping that the electronic board signs will reflect that, Mr. City Manager, that the election is. I noticed that today, coming down here, it's reminding us not to Texas Drive.
Yeah, we've reached out to the PD today to ask them to change that to the election.
Okay, great. That, that would be wonderful, again. And again, I'll remind everybody, please take your signs down, and thanks again, Director of Public Works, Wes Anderson, for doing a really good job tuning up. That was great. All right, that's it for tonight. We'll have adjournment at 8:11. Thank you all very much.